This meeting is being recorded.
And you're on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session, and we're now reconvening in open session. We're live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV this evening, and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website following the meeting. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting by Montague Community Television Broadcast. An extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical, too. And again, any members of the public who wish to join the meeting by Zoom may do so by accessing the link. It can be found on our Gil Montague Regional School District website. And you need to look under School Committee Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings, and it'll have tonight's school committee meeting date for that. And our first item of business this evening is fiscal year 24 budget hearing and discussion. The hearing was advertised in the local newspapers as required by Mass. General Law, and it was posted seven days, at least seven days ahead of this particular meeting. And we're doing it first so that if anyone is joining us for just that hearing, that they will not have to wait till we get further into our meeting. So Joanne, if you'd like to start.
Sure. We presented the entire budget on January 10th of the school committee. On the 17th, we talked about the line item budgets. And then on the 31st of January, we presented the budget in full to the town select board finance committees. So at this point, we're not going to do the entire presentation again, but this is our preliminary budget. It's based on what we believe will be our revenues in fiscal '24. Those revenues won't be released until March. And so, once we receive those revenues, the numbers in March, we will reevaluate the budget, will make adjustments as necessary, and then we'll bring it back to you for a vote on March 14th. So that's really all I have to say. There's a lot of unknown things. I guess I can add the insurance fixed charges. Those are unknown numbers that we have to estimate. The school choice and charter numbers going out and in are numbers that we really need to estimate. And those numbers are estimates right through the end of each fiscal year because those numbers are based on enrollment of school choice and charter students throughout the year, and they change. So if a student is in school choice for two months, we get billed for two months of that student. And then we've also had increased facilities and maintenance and utilities costs that have had to be built into this budget. And special ed out of district placements are another large number. So all of those things will be reevaluated again as we get closer to your vote date on March 14th, but it'll all come to you at that point after the state aid is released.
Okay. And since this is a hearing, if we have any members of the public who would like to ask questions, this would be a great time. If they would just indicate that they'd like to ask a question, we'd be happy. If we don't see you in a Zoom box and you're in the audience and would like to ask something, please just speak up. That's fine. Okay, I don't see or hear anyone at the moment. And just as a reminder for the public, the entire presentation that Joanne referred to is available on our website. I did check in recently to look at that again on the website. It is available there for people to read. And again, it's the tentative budget until we vote on March 14th.
Hi, Jane. This is Ron Wood, President GMEA.
Hi, Ron.
Is there going to be, is this the one and only time for questions? Or as we get closer to the 14th and know some of the state aids and some of the uncertainties coming in, will there be another option, once we've seen those numbers, to have additional questions at some point?
Oh, I don't see why not. I mean, unfortunately, we don't know all our numbers before. We have to, in fact, we won't know all of our numbers by the 14th of March even sadly. But certainly their questions will come up at a later date, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the problems, Jane, is going to be that by the time the numbers come out at the beginning of March, we're not going to have a separate meeting between when the numbers come out and when you're voting. So all we're going to have is the meeting where you're going to vote, that will present the entire budget again and show you what the changes have been. And then we'll ask you to vote.
That's why we don't have another meeting in there before the 14th, do we?
Right. So we're trying to gather some ideas now on what changes could potentially come to the budget. Should we have more revenue? Should we have less revenue? And I'm hoping that we can bring those to you on the 28th.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you. Will there perhaps be a tentative list of additions or deletions, depending on how money works out, and that we can discuss at our next meeting? And people would be welcome to join us at that time in case they have any questions.
But I think, you know, if staff want to talk to their principals about the budget, the principals have the budget, and we are asking them to give us some recommendations for additions and, you know, deductions from their budget. So that's where their input could be had.
Okay, that's a good point. Yeah, staff members could be checking in with their principal. So when there's testing changes, their views will be included.
Yep.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thanks, Jane. I'm just confused. There's a lot of people here that I don't recognize, and I'm guessing they have things to say, and I'm not sure it's probably not my place or whatever. But I'm just, I'm really interested in understanding.
I know.
People, and you've given everyone opportunity to speak, but I'm just sort of saying again, like, hey, guys, if there's something to say or questions you have, please say them because I think like that's what we're here for. And I'm definitely interested in seeing all the, I mean, I know they're just boxes with words of names, but I'm still interested in understanding why folks are here. So I apologize if it's not my place to say, but I just, you know, like, please speak. If you have something to say or questions to ask, I really want to know what they are.
I think I do see a hand now. Thank you. I believe it's Leslie Charles.
Hi, yes, I'm a teacher at Turner's Falls, and I'm here just to gather information. I didn't realize that the budget was going to be discussed, and so I might be talking for other people, too. So I don't want to ask anything that I don't know yet. And so I'd be interested to, and also I'm interested in having the principal talk to us about it. It hasn't happened yet, so I didn't know that that was part of the plan to have the principal talk to discuss the budget with us.
Absolutely. And as I mentioned there, you can go on, which you wouldn't have necessarily known, you can go on the GMRSD website, and the document is there for you to review.
Great, thank you.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
Leslie, if you were to go to the website and look at the posted recording of the January 10th meeting, what was it, January 10th and January 24th meetings, where I think January 10th is where we did the preliminary, the presentation of the preliminary budget, where there'll be a little bit more detail there. And of course, you have the line items attached to this evening's agenda as well. And so you may have questions that come from that. And certainly, Joanne and I can also make ourselves available if you want to email us questions that we can get them back to you, too, or even make arrangements to see us in person. Okay?
Great, thank you.
And one thing people may be interested in is that this budget doesn't include any staff cuts. So there's no reductions of staff in this budget.
Christina?
Yeah, this might seem like a minor detail, but there is a difference between what I think Leslie said and what Joanne said around the communication channel. I think Joanne was saying that teachers should reach out to principals, but then Leslie said principals, like, I'm waiting for the principal to talk to me about this. I think it's really important. There's not, there are some people here that I don't recognize, like Jennifer is saying. So I'm assuming there might be other teachers in the audience, but not all teachers in every school. And I would encourage, my perspective is that it should be what Leslie said, principals should be actively reaching out and talking to teachers about what they need, what they would put on the list, and not waiting for teachers to take that action. They're so busy. They have so much on their plate, the awareness that this is happening amidst all the other things that they're doing. I just, it's a minor, it may seem like a minor detail, but I think it's important to make sure that we're getting input from teachers intentionally and not just hearing from the ones who may happen to know that this is going on.
Thank you, Christina. Yep. Good point. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have anything? We certainly would be happy to hear it. And also, if people are just listening, that's great. Sometimes we do just get Zoom audience members who'd like to hear what's happening, which we appreciate very much. And if something occurs to those people, as Brian has already mentioned about the budget, he and Joanne are certainly available for questions and don't feel shy about doing that. We're very happy to have people ask questions. Jennifer?
I just have another question about like the curious timing of things. So like Joanne said, you know, no one knows anything yet, and we don't know what money's coming in or whatever. And I just, it feels so strange and odd. And like, how do you even speak to that then? If, I know, Joanne, you already did speak to it a little bit, but I feel like it maybe needs a little more platform time to say.
Yeah, I think it does, Jennifer. The problem is Mass. General Law requires that regional schools have their budgets organized by a certain time. And the state, especially when there's a new governor appointed, the numbers don't come out in time. You know, there are other things that are going to come up later at the meeting that, you know, timeliness matters. And sometimes at the legislative level, there's an issue with that. Joanne, you want to speak to that a bit?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. I just want to say thank you, Jaden. I'm not actually trying to be difficult. I just.
Oh, no.
It's a very curious topic, and so I just, I feel like it needs a little more.
Right. And I think it's good to have it out there. Every year, it just, I can't believe that that's how things are supposed to work. I just really am appalled.
So, so most years, when our governor has been in office, the budget comes out in early February from the governor. And so we're able to use those numbers, create our assessments, and do all of that work beginning in early February. But when there's a new governor in office, that they don't have to release their budget, and they have an extra month. So they don't have to release it until early March. And then our regional agreement says that we must approve our budget at least 45 days prior to the first town meeting. So if the first town meeting could potentially be the first week of May, we have until basically March 15th to approve the budget. So our meeting's scheduled for the 14th. So, you know, that doesn't leave us any time. Now, we could schedule another school committee meeting in the first week of March to talk about the budget and then vote on March 14th. So that would be an extra meeting, I guess, March 7th, then come back together. But that's a really quick turnaround for me to get the entire budget put together and bring it to you and be able to speak to that and explain what's happening with those numbers and also sort of sort through some of those things. So we may be able to talk to you, like, go come together on March 7th and say, this is what the state aid number is coming in at. This is what our assessments look like based on knowing how much each town is required to pay, because those things fluctuate as well. This is what our school choice and charter numbers are looking like. We still won't have our health insurance rates. You know, there's still some of those things that are up in the air. We know about more out of districts, special ed students that we may need to include in our budget. But we can bring you more information, just not a budget presentation for March 7th. That presentation of the whole thing put together will be on the 14th. So maybe that's something you want to discuss, is having an extra meeting tucked in there on the 7th. And this is an unusual year. Remember, next year, the budget will be released at the beginning of February.
Thank goodness. Bill?
Yeah, I just want to add that in all of this, all of this process is historically out of sync, just like you're puzzled by Jennifer. And anything that the district does compiling numbers is helpful, but it's not the definitive answer because even as Joanne is talking about the governor's budget, the governor's budget doesn't mean much until the House and the Senate get together and decide how they want to change it. And therefore, even if you get a good governor's budget, it doesn't necessarily reflect what you're going to end up with. And complicating that is in recent time, I'm not sure about the last couple of years, but in recent time, the Senate and the House haven't gotten together until June 30th. And at least one instance, they were later than that. So it is a difficult puzzle, and the people in the central office are really guessing in a lot of issues, especially when it comes to revenue and then how that is going to affect the assessments to the individual towns. If budget from the state comes in higher, then the assessments to the towns, there will be a give back. In any event, how does that scramble the eggs? I don't know.
Thank you very much.
Bill, that clears it up. But it's true. So we could think about that, though. I mean, we'll talk at the end of the meeting about our next scheduled meetings. And if people are feeling that they would like to, you know, try to at least get a little more information at an additional meeting before the 14th, we certainly could see if it's, if people would be able to make that sort of thing. We can bring it up at the end when we schedule the next meeting. Any other questions? Or at this point, Christina?
Yeah, I just want to understand, make sure I'm understanding process wise. So based on something Joanne was saying earlier, it sounds like the main question to us will be if we're, if we have more funds than we thought, then what would we spend it on? And if we have less, then what would we cut? Am I understanding that correct, that we might need to do some?
And that's why, yeah, that's why she referred to having principals check with their staff because the budget is built from that level up.
Do we have an existing list of those two categories of things that are kind of first thoughts around what might be first priority to cut or first priority to spend? Is there any sort of draft of that list, or is that fully blank slate? We have no idea at this point.
Well, we do, you know, I know I'm going to look at our revenues, and I'm going to look at our choice and charter and, you know, a lot of those big things that I'll look at again. But the principals have not come to us with their list just yet.
No, Monday's administrative team meeting, this past Monday, so we alerted them at the previous administrative team meeting to begin thinking about this. And then at this past Monday's meeting, Joanne created a worksheet for everybody to be able to access so that we could all see what principals would put in as potential additions or potential reductions. And so they began working on it at the admin team on Monday, and we began a discussion. So yes, the list is in the process of being built, but it's important for principals to be doing that consulting with members of their staff about, in particular, potential reductions if we were to get bad news from the state.
Leslie?
Yeah, Brian, is that sheet that they're going to present to you or that you have access to going to be public knowledge so we can see what the principals are thinking in terms of the cutting? I know that they'll be consulting us, but I'm just curious if we can actually see that list.
Not at this particular time. We've not done it this way before, but it's really for discussion at the admin level for quite some time because one of the things that occurs, you know, for example, we don't want the Sheffield principal making recommendations that we cut a position at Hillcrest if we're looking at potential reductions. But it's more of a worksheet for us to be able to identify and work backwards from priorities. And so if those, so it's more of a worksheet for us, Leslie, than it is a public document because it's just, it's potential. So there would be consulting and then additions to the worksheet.
And do I see, Christie might have a question? In the absence of that, Brooke, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So what I'm hearing, especially for educators that might be in the audience, is that they really need to talk to their principal about that, and then the principal will relay that in their conversations when they're talking about potential additions or reductions. Is that correct? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go to the next portion of the meeting?
You said we would talk about scheduling at some point. I'm not sure if this is the right place, but given that we don't have a way to preview what that potential list would be, even like in a draft form right now, and I mean, the list of potential additions or subtractions, I am in favor of either scheduling that March 7th meeting, maybe with a reduced schedule or something, but, or sharing that out with the school committee with advance time so that we can have a chance to review. But I feel uncomfortable coming to a meeting in the same time span of that meeting being, you know, needing to make a cast of vote on that, on that particular topic. And I know, Joanne, you said it would be a tight turnaround for you, so I don't know if there's a way to lighten that burden. I think like a low fidelity, even like low fidelity version, just like, which direction are we going? What are the potential things that, so that there's some pre-soaking that can be done? So we're not like feelings, so under the wire, making decision on the spot without a chance to really like weigh and consider.
Right. So by the time the 7th comes, I'll at least know if the budget's going to go up or down. So we'll at least have that. And it's possible that when the budget comes out, we don't really need to go up or down. You know, it's just going to sort of stay flat with some of the little adjustments of revenues and, like, choice and charter and those big numbers that really don't impact any individual school or any individual people. It could very well end up there. And if that's the case, then we really don't need to have another meeting on the 7th. But if it's the case where we need to make reductions or we need to make additions, then I think the meeting on the 7th is good, and we'll be able to talk about which direction we need to go and share that shorter list with you.
Okay. And so if we're thinking about the 7th, then I won't ask people to necessarily even commit till the end of this meeting. So they do have a little time, even though we're meeting, to think about it. Would we know by, let's say, the day before that it wasn't going to be enough of an impact that we needed to change that much? So that if we scheduled it tentatively, when could we let folks know if we didn't need to have it?
Yeah, I think the day before might be the best we could do.
Okay. So I mean, if people are willing, yeah, with the idea.
On the first, which I believe could be, well, it's a Wednesday. So, yeah, we may have an idea. We really just have to wait and see when those numbers come out, what they look like, what the minimum contributions look like, to put the whole thing together and then see if we have a gap or if we have a surplus.
Okay. So we'll come back to this when we're scheduling the next meetings. And because if we are planning one, we do have to post it, you know, 48 hours ahead prior and make sure that that's posted correctly. Bill?
Right.
Yeah, I just want to be a little uplifting in that the new governor is reported to be thinking very strongly about rural educational financing as well as general financing. Certainly, our senators, state senators in this area have been very active in trying to produce more revenue for the districts in the rural communities legislatively. So I think there are areas where you can be optimistic as opposed to thinking that the worst is coming. But everything may not be settled just by March 14th is the message I would like you to all walk away with and then be optimistic that we can get enough funding to make, have our educational system be responsible to our community. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else? Okay, in that case.
Sorry, Jane, I have something.
Nope, that's fine.
Yeah, I was just wondering if perhaps, because at this time, we have approved the preliminary budget, but there are still changes that can be made before March 14th. So I'm thinking at this time, even if any members in the audience don't know the exact lines or numbers, if there's any feelings or thoughts that they might be having or things that they would like the school committee to know regarding that, then this would be the time to ask that question. Is that correct?
Sure, definitely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm trying to remember when I was teaching, how long the wait time is supposed to be after you ask a question and wait for the answer. How long is that, Brooke?
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to remember when I was teaching how long the wait time is supposed to be after you ask a question and wait for the answer. How long is that, Brooke? It's always a general idea, but please, people, anyone out there in the audience or anyone you speak to, if they have a question, please send it forward. And we certainly by the end will think about if we want to try to get another meeting in if we need it. Thank you all and thank you, Joanne. Moving back to the rest of our agenda, um, this would be the time for public participation policy. BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. And we have not received any requests this evening to do so, but we'll continue to put that on the agenda. If you're in the Zoom audience, um, I appreciate that you're keeping your camera and the microphone off. That really does help us a lot. Thanks. Brian, if you want to deal with important events, that'd be great.
So tomorrow is an early release day in the district for professional development. On Thursday, February sixteenth, uh, from three P M. to six P M. There's a COVID, um, COVID nineteen and flu vaccine clinic being held at Turner's Falls High School. The flyer is on the banner at the school website. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to highlight is that anybody who gets a COVID vaccine or a booster, uh, will get a free seventy-five dollar gift card from the agency that is, uh, organizing the, um, the vaccine clinic. And that people do need to bring an I D, an insurance card and a, um, and their vaccination card to get updated if they get a booster or getting vaccine for the first time. And then, uh, Monday, February twentieth to Friday, February twenty-fourth is school vacation week. There'll be no school. And Friends of Sheffield will meet on Monday, February twenty-seventh at six P M. In the Sheffield Teachers Room.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any things to add to that? Sometimes members will hear about events. Okay, do we have our student rep with us this evening? Is Sina able to join us, Heather?
No, she works at the chocolate store and obviously tonight is a crazy, crazy.
Goodness, yes. What, what a shame she has to do that job, huh?
Yeah, when I saw her today, she felt like she was going to get out at six and be able to make it back in time. Uh, but was sort of up in the air about it, but clearly they've held there for a bit longer, so. Yeah, they do, they do have a, a busy week this week with the, the booster week uh, and spirit week that's going on. So I'm sure that on the twenty-eighth, if she's able to make it, um, she'll have a lot to report to us.
Yes, thank you. So why don't you continue, uh, Brian, with your report?
So, uh, just one recognition here, um, that we have, uh, two recipients of the, of Turner's Falls High School's Earl McGraw Uplift, Uplift Award. This award is given in memory of former assistant principal Earl McGraw. It's presented to one staff member and one student each year for exemplifying outstanding leadership in the areas of kindness, care for others and care for the community. This year's staff recipient is music director Alyssa Camo. And the student recipient is senior Jade Duncan. Congratulations to both recipients, and I want to thank them both for their commitment and dedication and support of the Turner's Falls High School community. I know that Jade is a student who's also, uh, trained, a, a trained active bystander and, um, was one of the students who assisted with, uh, more than a handful of fundraisers and, and, uh, really goes above and beyond in supporting the community and is just an outstanding person. And we've spoken quite a bit about the amazing work that, um, Alyssa Camo has done with the music program, going from eighteen students to well over a hundred during the three years that she's been here. And, uh, we're continuing to work to help support that program and the students. So congratulations to both of those people. I know the school committee, um, met with students on Friday, February third, and the next scheduled date for the committee to meet with students, um, is Friday, March third. I didn't know if, uh, I thought, Heather, if you wanted to take a moment to just share anything from the stu-
You cut out, so I hope that it's not me. Can you hear me? Yeah, it was really great, actually. Um, that's always one of my favorite things to do. We had a number of school committee members and a huge number of students this time. It was really, really tremendous, like half or double, if not triple, the amount of students we usually have. So that was really cool. Um, we chatted a little bit about A I. And our thoughts and that was fairly interesting. Um, none of them are it didn't sound we're terribly worried about it and that our teachers already kind of had things in place, um, that really can just track their work, you know, um, just really reasonable normal things to deal with new technology and no one seems afraid of it. And it was a really good conversation. Then we opened it up to kind of what they had some concerns with. And a couple of little things popped up that we are going to take to the next step. So Brian, if you want to in an email later, point me in the right direction. Um, the water filling stations that we have are really great so that students can fill up their water bottles. But the, a lot of the filters are showing that they're unread, meaning they need to be replaced. So that's something they would like. They've asked to have completed as soon as possible. Soap in the bathrooms is an ongoing issue. They're in some bathrooms, of course, but, um, not in others. And so they'd like to see, um, soap regularly replaced. And they did bring up a bigger multifaceted issue. It sounds simple, but it's really not. Um, but some bathrooms are locked to help curb particularly vaping, since that's kind of the new thing over smoking in the bathrooms. They don't feel like it's really working, that there are just a small number of students um, where that's an issue and that they just end up going to the unlocked bathrooms anyway. Um, someone even brought up that we haven't, they don't feel like they've been addressing young, um, people with addiction, um, which I thought was kind of a really good point. Um, it was, it was a really good. It was just a really great conversation. It always is with them, so. Anyone else? Who else was there like to add?
Um, John?
Yeah, and I, I would just say, I, I think they said there were a relatively few number of students who were vaping. They thought maybe ten boys and seven or eight girls. So it's not a large number of people. And, um, but I think they were really irritated by, okay, I have to go to the bathroom and I can't go. This, this is locked. And when I go to the open one, well, they're vaping in there anyway. So, uh, and so I, I don't know how, I guess it has to be addressed, I, you know, in a non-punitive way. We're not out to, you know, slam the kids who are vaping, but, uh, I don't know what, whether there are grants available for these kinds of things or, or, or what. It's, uh, I mean, in the seventies, they just gave us kids smoking cards. And as long as you had your smoking card, it was, it was cool, but that's no longer an option, unfortunately.
Right, it is. I mean, I will admit, when I was in Turner's Falls High School, it was just cigarettes people were smoking in the bathroom. And then by the time, I don't know, maybe one of my siblings came, they had an outside smoking area for the students. I mean, times do change and we have learned that's probably not a good thing. And, but I think that the students are so thoughtful. I think as Heather said, it's always like the high point of the week. Um, they're thoughtful about things. They offer ideas and, um, it was wonderful to have such a big group there to, to give us their ideas and their opinions on things. For sure. John?
Well, and, but, but, but because they did bring it up in such a good faith way, it kind of obligates us to take some action.
Right. I think you're right.
And so I, I know that one of the students had, um, believed that the filters had been replaced, uh, in the building and maybe that the, um, the sensors weren't reset, which is, is part of that process. I, I had a meeting with Heath briefly and then when I was over at the high school today and met with Rick McCarthy, he had actually replaced, um, he had three more to replace and those filters had just arrived today. So he's going to go back through the building. Uh, I actually saw him at the end of the high school day today. Working on the one that was, is closest to the theater. He had replaced the filter and I believe he was in process of setting them. So that part should at least be taken care of now. And Heath and I met on, uh, the soap issue and we'll continue to work on that. I know. So one of the concerns is that, um, or one of the challenges is that you know, sometimes students will go into the bathroom and, um, crank. You know, bleeding out the, all the soap from the dispenser so that it can't be in there. And if we don't get it reported, you know, it doesn't get replaced and that can also exacerbate the, um, the checks for the stock on the bathrooms. And, uh, Heath and Christopher and I will get together on, um, the conversation around locking the bathroom and then check back in, locking the bathrooms and supervision. The issues of vaping and, and trying to manage that. So thank you for the feedback. Thank you to the kids for the feedback, but thank you also to the committee for consulting with them and providing us that information.
Uh, just thought I care, sorry to change the subject really quick. We can go back to it if we want to. Um, Sina is back and she might be able to chat. Is it okay if she jumps in in like five minutes?
Oh, sure. If she'd like to, definitely. We, we like to hear from students. So yeah, when she's available, that's great. In the meantime, Brian, you could probably keep reading.
All right, can I, before I move on from vaping, I wanted Heather mentioned the concern from students around supporting students from the addiction side and that didn't get returned back to that specific point. And I was wondering if, no, Brian, you said that there would be a return to, that you would kind of be looping back with dealing with the students that were vaping. Can you speak more to what that means or looks like? And is, are there any existing programs or potential programs that could support students who are vaping and, um, you know, supporting them with those decisions, not necessarily from a punitive lens, but from, you know, supporting them to make you know, health, healthy lifestyle choices, understand the risks that they're taking on.
So one of the disadvantages that we have, Christina, it's a, it's a problem that we've not yet solved is, um, we had a a program in place that, um, was funded. Uh, we actually collaborated with Franklin County Tech. And, um, Diane Ellis, their, their superintendent, Rick Martin, um, their lead guidance counselor had worked together with the town to secure cannabis impact fees. For the purpose of having both schools, we split a licensed drug and alcohol counselor. And part of the reason for that was we, we firmly believe that as students were coming back to in-person learning from having been out of school, that there was going to be the risk of substantially more students who were engaging in substance use. And so while we were able to use that effectively last year as a, um, I wouldn't say a deterrent, but as, as an educational and, and therapeutic support for students who were dealing with issues of addiction, we did also, um, change our practice in terms of dealing with, it wasn't a, any sort of a substance that a student had been caught with at school or had come forward and reported. So if they were in a disciplinary situation where perhaps they were found with marijuana, we would reduce the period of suspension substantially in exchange for th- those students engaging in, in the counseling. And, um, that, that seemed to be effective. The, the counselor worked well with our students in this current school year budget. So the, the F Y twenty-three budget, um, we had gone to the town. We put in a proposal for both schools to actually have a full-time licensed drug alcohol counselor on campus. And then the town, in doing their legal research, came back to us just before the start of the school year. I want to say it was probably late July or early August to indicate to us that they did not believe that the funds could be used by the schools for that purpose. And so we had to end that program because we didn't necessarily have the funding for even a part-time licensed drug alcohol counselor. And so that's not something that we've yet addressed. And so students, we still take the same approach to students working with a counselor, but our adjustment counselors don't necessarily have the same expertise as a, a L D A C. And, um, so that's something that we need to look at in, in term, internally, uh, in particular at the secondary level to see what we might be able to do, whether it's, uh, trying to find a service where we could do outside referrals and how that might work. Um, or, you know, the ideal situation was being able to have somebody in the school because then the student didn't have to leave school to go get the counseling. Um, and it's really, if we leverage that kind of private work outside the district, then really o- only families who have the means to get their children there can get that kind of counseling. So there are a number of problems that we need to, we need to address around that. So I'm happy to hear that, that students are supportive of their peers in that way, um, that they want them to get help rather than to get, rather than having them be punished or kicked out of school. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you. So that's something we'll need to follow up on and see what we can do, I think. Hi, Sina, I see you've joined us.
Hi, nice to see you. Yeah, sorry I'm a little late here. I didn't get home until now because of the day at work. But anyways, um, before I get into the, um, student council report, I'd just like to add on to what Mr. Beck was just talking about. So I was at that meeting with the other, um, student council members talking about the vaping issues. And coming from a student perspective, I really am supportive of the idea of getting help for students because it's becoming a growing issue and it's expanding beyond just the high school because, um, I, I know that a lot of the middle schoolers are vaping now as well. And this is beyond just like students just making bad decisions. It's now like becoming an addiction problem where these students like don't know how to quit on their own and they don't have the resources to quit. And so I think having like that sort of support would be amazing because it's becoming a big frustration amongst the student body too, because it's resulting in them shutting down bathrooms and things like that, which of course isn't the biggest deal in the world compared to students being addicted to a substance at a young age. But it's just a frustrating thing because then students aren't in class because they are staying in the bathrooms vaping and they're not getting the same education. So I think that that support would be really great for our school, for everybody, not even just the students who are vaping, the other students, because it's starting to affect everybody in the whole school at this point. So yes, I'm very supportive of that. But yeah, to get into the more upbeat, fun things, um, student council, we're in the middle of a spirit week right now at the high school, which is super fun for Valentine's Day. Let me think about the spirit days we're doing. So yesterday was pajama day, which was nice. Today was like red and pink day for Valentine's Day. Tomorrow's could definitely going to be an interesting one. We're doing anything but a backpack day, which basically means students like instead of bringing in their normal backpack, they can bring in some other object to carry their things around. And it's going to be really weird, I think. And I'm really curious to see what people will bring in. I'm act, I'm impressed we got that one passed, so. I'm curious. Um, uh, Thursday, oh, Decades Day, we assigned each grade a different decade to do. And we also assigned the staff. The staff got the eighties. I think the juniors are the nineties, freshman two thousands and I honestly don't remember, but we all got assigned a decade. That'll be good. And then Friday's class color day because we've got a pep rally going on Friday. Everyone's excited for that. We're going to have some fun games and the, the pet band with Miss Camo is going to be there performing, I believe, which is always a good addition. And then, other than that, the only other like thing going on is the freshman class is doing a, um, a serenade fundraiser for Valentine's Day, which was really fun. We had most of those today. So all last week, they were selling their serenades where you could purchase them like, like a time slot for them to go and sing a song to a person of your choosing all together. And today we had an all-school meeting and they were doing serenades and bringing people up on stage. Even, uh, Mr. Barnes, actually, he got took, he got on stage and he got, Never Going to Give You Up by Rick Astley sung to him by the freshman class. That was pretty good. And yeah, throughout the day, the, the, this, like the group of freshmen have been kind of coming around to different classes and singing interesting song choices to people, giving a show. It's been pretty great.
You can see one of them on the, uh, Instagram page for the high school.
Oh, yeah. There was some pretty funny ones and there were like very heartfelt love ballads that were sung by a bunch of, um, thirteen-year-old boys. So that was great. But anyways, it's a fun time. Good spirit week. And that's all I got for today.
Thank you so much, Sina. We always enjoy when you visit with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sina. Uh, Jane, if it's okay, I, I just want to continue on, um, provide a little bit more information and, and some, some thank yous. Uh, on Saturday, February fourth, at about four fifteen P M., a pipe burst in the fire suppression system in the vestibule at, uh, at the front of the high school. Uh, the Turner's Falls Fire Department was on the scene, uh, just prior to the arrival of Facilities Director Heath Cummings. The fire department had shut off the water to the sprinkler system, but hundreds of gallons of water had already washed into the first floor hallways and the front office. Damage was fairly extensive near the front. Damage was fairly extensive near the front office and in the vestibule itself. Director Cummings did a full accounting of the damage and repairs, and we've provided that to the insurance company. Heath was also joined by facility staff, Rick McCarthy, Bill Sweeney, Diane Cassidy, and Scott Curtis. And as a result of their efforts and with the assistance of the Turner's Falls Fire of some Turner's Falls Fire Department members. They were able to clean the water up on Saturday by nine PM. On Sunday, February fifth, we closed access to the building for practices or any extracurricular activities or any public activities. The fire suppression system was repaired by noon that Sunday. And the remarkable efforts of facility staff enabled us to be ready to receive students on Monday, February fifth. I wanted to say sincere thanks to the Turner's Falls Fire Department, um but also everyone who helped. In the process and who responded so quickly to this emergency on their weekend and worked so hard um. To enable us to bring students back to school. It really was a remarkable effort um to overcome really what what is an engineering flaw. That will have to have rectified um. So that those the pipes that go out there as part of the fire suppression system are able to get uh heated from the heaters that are just below them. On Monday, February sixth, as though the cold wasn't doing enough damage at in the high school building. Facility staff member Doug Honeycutt was doing his early morning review of the uh of Gill Elementary School. He noticed water on the floor in one of the classrooms at the end of the building. There was a beef brief power outage on Friday, February third, which caused the heating system to shut down for a short period of time. When the system restarted, one of the two pumps that moves water heated water through the system did not turn on. As a result, wat warm water or heated water had not moved all the way down. Into that end of the building. And as a result, a pipe had burst in one of the classrooms at the end of the building. Facility staff moved quickly to acquire four large space heaters. While they worked to maintain a heat of at least sixty-five degrees in the two affected classrooms and were able to keep school open. First grade had to relocate um instruction for two days while contractors repaired the burst pipe. Thank you to all those uh at Gill who collaborated to help keep our children in school while the repairs were being completed. So the cold weather. We almost escaped it, but um you know, just two days of cold weather. Um, created a pretty significant challenge for our facility staff and I couldn't be more pleased with. How they stepped up, responded to it and made sure that the kids were able to continue to attend school. Gill Elementary School also had a COVID cluster. Last week, we saw an increase in positive COVID cases at Gill Elementary School. Um, school nurse Carol Varner consulted with regional public health health officials. Who recommended increasing um masking and providing home test kits for all families to enable testing of students and. If students and staff were symptomatic. We provided adult and student masks as well as test kits to Gill Elementary from our inventory and the recommend recommendation for wearing masks. Continues through February fifteenth. In monitoring COVID trends, I wanted to share with uh the school committee that I'm no longer going to be sharing. Uh, the Mass Department of Public Health COVID numbers by town um. With the cases reported at Gill Elementary over the last two weeks. That we know that some of those individuals were Gill residents and yet when I went into the public health report um. That the uh town of Gill had reported zero cases as well as um zero percent positivity. And I don't mean to imply that it was the town of Gill, but um. In the public health report, it was clear that uh really clear that that's no longer no longer a reliable resource for us to look at. I will add that the CDC, which um. Relies on, you know, local municipal and regional monitoring of wastewater. Systems currently ranks Franklin County as low in terms of risk of transmission for COVID nineteen. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone have any questions for Brian? Okay, thank you. Um, moving on, uh business and operations report. Joanne, I think you had perhaps an item or two.
Yes, I just have a little notice. It's basically informational about. Our GIC insurance. So the Group Insurance Commission is where we get our insurance from. And they're they're the largest purchaser of health insurance in Massachusetts. They have four hundred and sixty thousand members. And the problem is they they don't release their rates until after we voted our budget. So they're going to be voting them on March second. But they probably won't release the rate, so we won't have an idea of what those numbers are. So. We have budgeted about a four percent, five percent increase. I'm not sure rate off the top of my head. And. So, you know, we're hopeful that that will be enough to cover. The insurance, but this is just one more of those pieces of the budget that we don't have the information for. In time to put the budget forward. So we really have to use our best guess to. To build the budget in these cases.
John.
Uh, Joanne, what fraction of the budget uh do you have this ambiguity on? Uh, well, what fraction of revenues? Would you say do we have a degree of ambiguity on what they're going to be at this point?
Well, it's not so much a fraction of the revenues because, you know, state aid could be about eight million dollars goes into it. But, you know, our our unknown piece is, you know, four hundred thousand. Of that eight million. Our assessments are, you know, another seven million dollars. And I'm I'm just guessing here. I don't have this in front of me. And so our unknowns might be several hundred thousand, but it's several hundred thousand is a pretty big deal. Our our health insurance is, you know, three million, three point five million. But it's a couple hundred thousand that is the variance, you know, the variations.
It it seems that the variance is actually larger than the two hundred thousand dollar kind of padding, right? And and in the. Twenty-four million dollar budget, if I understood that correctly from last meeting. When it looked like there's about two hundred thousand dollars worth of wiggle room in the twenty-four million dollar general fund budget. Uh, I'm looking at that correctly.
Yeah, if you're talking about fiscal twenty-three, right, where's our? Our wiggle room in fiscal twenty-three budget, the budget we're operating, budget we're building. It's the same thing as we're getting ready to build it. We're just not sure where these numbers are going to be. And and they change throughout the year. You know, as people add insurance or move insurance.
And these unknown numbers then are larger than our wiggle room. Is is that would that be would that?
They are. Yeah, I'm not worried about fiscal twenty-three at this point. I'm not worried about that going over right now because of our school choice and charter numbers. You know, I think we're okay in fiscal twenty-three, but fiscal twenty-four is it's a huge unknown. There's a lot of unknowns that go into that budget. So. You know, we we do the best we can to estimate the budgets and. As the information comes in, we're able to plug those numbers in and and make some adjustments. But the health insurance, I just wanted to alert you that while GIC may vote those numbers. March second, they may not release them, so we wouldn't have them before the fourteenth. Possible, we get them right before. And we're able to adjust those numbers, but we're just gonna have to wait and see on that. So that's that's all I have, just the GIC information.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. Appreciate it. Um, moving on to school committee reports. Uh, we need warrant subcommittee approval and you have the details in your packet. The warrants are all dated to fifteen two thousand twenty-three. We have four warrants this time. I'll. Give you the details and then I would appreciate it if we had a motion to appoint. To approve them all in one motion. The first is an accounts payable warrant to pay our bills. Number three, three, two, seven, for the amount of four hundred eighteen thousand seventy-seven dollars and five cents. The second is a middle school student activity warrant, number three, three, two, eight, for two hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Then there are two high school student activity warrants. The first is number three, three, two, nine, for three thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. And the last one is a high school student activity warrant, three, 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 zero, in the amount of four thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. I will entertain a motion to approve those.
I will move the motion.
Yep, thank you, Jennifer moved and Heather seconded. Any questions about those? And as I say, all those details are in your packet for what they account for. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to approve it. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And me, yes, thank you. Moving on to the business portion, um we did already have the budget discussion and I think Joanne, that was all covered in the um. Hearing, correct?
Yes, I think we we pretty much covered it during the hearing.
Right, and we will continue to discuss the budget at consecutive the subsequent meetings that we're having. Thank you. Okay, um, the next item, there is a high school trip taking place going to Europe, and I think we have. Some folks joining us to talk about that a bit, Brian.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome uh Latin and French teacher Megan Ben Dixon and also a special education teacher. Jessica Vacula-Curtis. Um, I do also want to um preface that um. This was a trip that was proposed in in my first year uh as a superintendent and obviously that was. A year when we really couldn't go and then subsequently. We brought it back up and we had put it on a a school committee agenda last year, but really only for discussion. And the primary reason that. I wouldn't let it come to the school committee for a vote at that particular time was that um. Many foreign countries still had um. Requirements for extended periods of quarantine if somebody had tested positive. And the the trip didn't account. For a student who may have had to stay in Paris for an additional ten days. And so I just didn't feel like it was even feasible to consider that. But with. Uh, the COVID restrictions for travel having been lifted um. And um it's it's now time for uh Jess and Megan and um. The folks that have been planning this for a couple of years to uh to bring it to school committee hopefully for approval. So thank you, Jessica.
I don't know if you'd rather have me or Megan speak. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, Megan, do you want to start it or do you want me to start?
Sure, I'm happy to start. Um, I don't have my video on, but hello, everybody. We're very excited to be able to bring. Our trip for you to vote on tonight. It's been, as Brian said, it's been years in the making and uh we're very excited. About the potential to, you know, take this trip with our students and provide this really unique learning opportunity for them. So. We put as much as we could think of in the packet for you. It's it's pretty chock full. Um, obviously, everything that you asked for, and then I think a few extra things as well, just so. It's all there, but um if you do have questions about the stuff that we include in the packet, uh Jess and I are happy to answer them.
Can you give a little overview of of uh for the committee? Um, if there are members who may not have had the opportunity to read through it, can you just give them an overview of the itinerary? Where you're going, where you're staying. Um, and there are twenty-three students. Actually, twenty-two students and ten adults on the trip. Um, and one of those adults is a registered nurse. Um, so we're um and our high school nurse nurse Beth Savage has really done a remarkable job of. Looking at all of the regulations and requirements and um interacting. Uh, with local health officials officials to make sure that everything is done correctly. So. Jess or Megan, would you guys mind just giving?
Absolutely, yeah. No, I'd be happy to. Um, it's an eight-day trip. We uh we fly out of Boston to Paris. So we spend the first half of the trip in Paris and we do all the amazing Paris things. We um, you know, our company does a lot of these. Uh, kind of books these activities for you, which is really helpful for us. So we have a tour director once we're there in Paris who like is our person on the ground. They live there. Year round, they're they're very comfortable in that environment. Um, and so we do, um, we have a tour, like a coach bus that we are. Taking around to various um activities that we're doing. We're doing a guided sightseeing tour. Um, we're doing, we're having a couple, a special dinner in the Latin Quarter, for example, we're going to the Louvre. Um, we're doing a river cruise on the Seine, which I'm especially excited for. Um, and so the first four days are spent in Paris. And um we included in the packet, you can see the hotel that we're staying at. And then we take a flight from Paris to Rome for the second half of the trip. And the second half of the trip is similarly where you have a coach bus and we have a tour guide and. You know, we have these activities that are that are structured and planned and we have all all sorts of things that I am looking forward to doing in Rome, like. Seeing the Colosseum again and getting some gelato and having a pizza dinner. But basically, um same idea where we have a group and we're with our group and we have activities that we're doing. So it's an eight-day trip. Four days in Paris, four days in Rome. Uh, and then before you know it, it'll be over and it'll be flying home. And the we're leaving on the tenth of March and coming back on the seventeenth of March.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the packet looks looks really thorough, gives us lots of good information and some examples of things and the cost. And I was pleased to see that even though it was unfortunate to have to delay it, it gave you a lot of time for um raising funds.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we actually, you know, in hindsight, I think we we all realized that that was kind of a blessing in disguise. We didn't realize at the time, but it really did turn out and we, you know, we were able to add. Quite a few more students to the group, um some more parents as well. We had more time for fundraising and we, you know, also had more time to kind of. Just kind of prepare ourselves and also um kind of become a group together. You know, we're going to be in these kind of travel situations together. And so we've. Really been spending time this whole school year, really um working on whether it's fundraising or if it's like learning some Italian together. We've been. Trying to build the community of of people who are going on the trip. And so having more time has actually worked out well for that as well.
Thank you. I apologize for falling off the edge of the seat, but my computer is deciding to have a problem charging, so I'm just trying to see if I can remedy that. But thank you. No, it sounds like a wonderful trip. Um, anyone else have any questions or comments for um? Jess and Megan?
I think it's great and I applaud you all for taking it on. So thank you.
It is a huge amount of work. It really is. It's, oh, yeah. Very impressive. Thank you for sure.
And I I really want to say a public thank you to um Beth Savage, our high school nurse, um really. Was phenomenal in assisting Megan and Jessica um pulled together everything that they needed for this trip. And um she's very knowledgeable and I really appreciate her hard work.
I would echo that as well, Brian. We really have appreciated working with her and all her help.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jane. This sounds so amazing. I just there's one sort of obvious question, which is like uh. In terms of access to the trip, in terms of equitable access to the trip, like I'm curious. How is it funded or people having to pay their own way or like, you know, how is that being approached?
Right, so um as we said, like having more time to to, you know, to go meant that people had more time to fundraise. Um, Explorica has a way like you can um students like posted kind of like social media posts and like there's like there's. Options for that that Explore kind of like kind of has templates for them. We also did some fundraising as a group. Um, we did a couple fundraisers um to try and make sure that um. We could offer that to students as much as possible. It is obviously. An expensive trip, like it is just going to be more expensive than your run-of-the-mill field trip. So um. We we did our best to, you know, be mindful of that and while also recognizing that like. We, we did our best to, you know, be mindful of that and while also recognizing that like it is, it is a financial. Difficulty in some cases.
Thank you.
We did actually meet with students and parents ahead of time too, as soon as we. Found out who is interested in going on the trip and we talked about the financial cost and we sort of. Confidential, well, not confidential to Megan and I, but confidentially had students and parents fill out some information for us, so we'd get an idea of. How much we needed to fundraise and how much families could afford. And, you know, when we first started planning this, we thought maybe we'd get six kids that could go on the trip and now we're up to twenty-three. So. I do think the extended time has really helped in terms of budgeting for everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm curious. Yeah, I, I'm curious to. And I heard you speak about learning or practicing some Italian and I'm curious more about the. The thinking for the trip around how students are, might, might be able to bring what they experience. Back into that dynamic realm, if there is some end-of-trip report or. Synthesis of what they experience across domains. It seems like such a rich opportunity for exploration of literature, art, history. Engineering, all sorts of things that, that you'll be encountering, culture, current events. So, yeah, foreign languages, you already mentioned, just curious to hear, yeah, what. What connections are made into the curriculum or how they're bringing that back into the school community? Yeah, curious to hear what, what y'all are thinking about around that.
I mean, it's a good question. Obviously, there's, as you said, there's, there's so many ways to go and we've been. We, we know that we want, that we're going to be doing some of that. I think we've been so focused on the minutia of like getting our trip approved. But it's been a lot of like in class, we'll talk about something in class and then we'll, and then I'll say something like, and we're going to see it. And so at this point, we're, we're focusing on like the stuff that. We're already doing in our curriculum that students are excited about and then they realize that it could be something that they could actually experience and they could actually see for themselves. Is where we're going right now, but we've talked about, Jess and I have talked about a couple ideas of like bringing the, bringing the trip back to the, the school in general. We haven't officially decided on exactly what that's going to look like and I think I want to, to kind of as we travel to, to be led by like what our experiences are. And like where, where that takes us, but I think definitely a self-reflection aspect is something that I've been thinking a lot about of, of like wanting students to be able to. Really take time to reflect on their, just like, kind of the experience of travel and the experience of, of. Interacting with another culture, even if it's not like necessarily, because like, you know, Latin students are going to be in Paris and, and. French students are going to be in Rome. It's, it's, it's about the entire, the entire process of being out of your comfort zone and experiencing someone else's. Like perspective of the world. So those are some of the things that I'm thinking of.
I think we'll definitely plan to do presentations. We do all school meetings every other week for our whole school community at the high school too. And so I think we'll certainly do probably some sort of slideshow presentation because we've been talking a lot to the whole school, you know, making announcements. About travel club meeting and things, so I think we'll certainly do some sort of report back and. I was thinking, Megan, actually too, as we were talking, probably reporting to middle schoolers too, just sort of get them excited about foreign language. A big part of this really from the beginning has been getting kids more excited about. Foreign language classes here at our school. And so we have a lot of younger students already who are already saying, well, you know, in a couple of years when I'm older, I really hope we can go on a trip like this too. So it's really generating excitement about the curriculum.
Thank you. John?
I, I was wondering, you, you're talking about extending this into the future. It seemed like you really took advantage of a, a two-year or three-year. Planning period. Would it be possible to plan that far in advance and have a couple of overlapping, you know, trips? In the pipeline or something, just to build up that, you know, head of money that enabled it to happen, I guess.
That, that is a great, that is the plan if things all work out. I'll be honest, this is my first time leading a trip and so if, I think if things go really well, I think. That we'll want to do it again. And I, I am already thinking, I already have students who are already asking me like, can I go? When can I go? How long will it be until we take the next trip? And I agree that I would like as much time as possible to plan, especially for fundraising. So, yeah, I could, I could see us. If everything goes well and obviously we all hope it will, but I could see doing every two years, right? Like maybe. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven. Yeah, and getting some familiarity with the process, I think would help us to kind of plan further out in advance. And kind of get that, like you said, like get that pipeline going if there's interest from students.
Bill?
Spanish teacher this year too, Victoria Mayo, and so this is her first year at our school, but. She's traveled abroad pretty extensively too and so potentially down the road incorporating our Spanish students as well. We have a larger group too.
Bill, did I see your hand?
Yeah, then you'd have to go to three countries. It begs the question of, what's the range, the, the age range or the grade range that you're now able to, that are participating? I'm assuming all twenty-three kids are not seniors.
So, as the leader of the trip and as the French and Latin teacher, I decided what I wanted from this, you know. From the students who are coming, so my, my kind of requirement for them was that they've taken two semesters of a, of a, of French. Or Latin or one of each. So they have a, have a good foundation of, of a language or of a culture before we. You know, bring them into a place where they're going to be putting that foundation into practice. So because of that, they're all sophomores and above. We have a couple sophomores, but sophomores, juniors and seniors is what we have this, this time around.
Thank you.
Brooke?
I would like to make a motion to approve this wonderful, fantastic field trip.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Jennifer seconded it. And any other discussion before we take a roll call vote? Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And me, yes. Yes, we, it's unanimously approved and thank you both for joining us and explaining it. It sounds wonderful. A great educational experience they can look forward to.
Thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
Visit with us at school committee sometime after they come back and tell us.
Ooh, that's a good idea.
That'd be great.
A great idea. We'll make them do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night, y'all.
Okay, from a fun activity to more regular business here. The next item is two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, school choice participation, which we have to vote on every year. If we are to continue participating. And Brian, did you want to say something about that?
Yeah, obviously. It, it would be in the district's interest as to continue to vote to take students in on school choice because under Massachusetts regulations. Students can choice out to other schools and if we weren't able to take students in, it would create a revenue imbalance and also. With the quality of programs and educational experience that we have here and the spaces that we have available for students currently in our schools. I would like to continue to offer those opportunities to students in nearby communities as well.
And we vote at this point just to participate or not, I believe at a later date. The number of openings for a school choice, students to join us will be decided. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the way that it works is that the school committee would vote, if the school committee votes to participate, then the principals have to look at their projected. Predicted number of students in each of their classrooms and based on that, they have to set a, a, a number of seats that are available. At each grade level and at each school. And if for some reason, a. There are a number of applicants that exceed the number of available spaces, then we have to hold a lottery and select students by chance.
Okay, so this evening, we're just voting on whether we're participating, correct?
Yep.
The rest of the information will come later. Jennifer?
Yeah, the rest of the, I'm sorry, the rest of the information just happens at the administrative level with the principals and, and my assistant. And then we continue to manage the number of school choice seats as, because there are students who do school choice in, even during the school year.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, did I see your hand?
Yeah, thanks. Has, have we ever voted not to participate?
I don't believe so. Not, not to the best of my knowledge.
And it sounds like there's, from in your opinion, Brian, no upside to not participating because there's a revenue piece and it sounds like the revenue piece is the majority piece.
There's a revenue piece and, and, and the opportunity piece, you know, that, again, there are, there are students who have. Moved out of the community and, and chosen to remain because of the connections that they've made with their teachers, their peers or program. And so. You know, I, I think we have great offerings here and, and I think that there are people who are interested in looking at those and exploring this.
So not participating means that other people can't choice in, but our people can choice. I say our people, the people who would normally be their. Home would be here, they could choice out, but we can't accept people who want to choice in. Is that right?
Yep.
Right. And are there other districts that you're aware of that have chosen not to participate?
Not in, not that I'm aware of in the western part of the state. And I don't know how many there are left in the eastern part of the state, but there are some school districts in the eastern part of the state, in some cases because. Their classrooms are full, you know, and so they really can't accept anybody in their district. So. I ran into those a little bit here and there when I was chairing accreditation teams for NIESC.
So the only reason you can imagine why a person would not participate is that their classrooms are already full. Is that right?
Right. If there's not space available, it wouldn't make sense to take in school choice students. I know that there is one district out here in, in western Massachusetts that did that. One particular year because. Their, their enrollment was already full and they needed to make, make sure that they had space for resident move-ins. And so I know that they closed school choice for a single year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill?
Yeah, just on addressing the notion of. Have districts voted against it. It's true that our district did, was strongly in resistance to it. Years ago. But it became. A non-winnable situation when districts all around us chose to take choice students in. And at that time. Gil Montague joined, joined the group.
Thank you.
One, one reason not to do it. Just because I, I can tell Jennifer, you're like trying to understand some things. I've heard my community members say here in Gil. And this, I'm saying this is not reflective of, reflective of my personal opinion, but just surfacing voices that I've heard. And that as people choice into Gil, it can feel like, oh, there's less local parent involvement. People remember a time when there was a very local act, active parent parental organization at Gil. It's harder for. Parents, families from farther away when they have to commute to do things like volunteer to maintain the nature study area. Area trails, for example, is a, is a specific example that I've heard. So I did here. So. That, that's an idea, but. Like I said, that's. I think needs to be taken within the broader context of what's going on like Bill has. Bill was saying.
Thank you. Yeah, I feel like I don't know enough about it and when I used to go here, there, there wasn't a thing. And it concerns me ever when it's a financial choice only and so I, I feel like I'm still not, I'm not sold on it. Generally speaking and that doesn't matter at all, but I just thank you all for entertaining my questions.
Anyone else? Okay, we have, Joanne, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I think, you know, if we were to discontinue accepting school choice. That wouldn't mean that the students that have already been accepted as school choice would have to leave. Those students can remain until they graduate from high school. It would only be new students choice again. That would change.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will take a roll call vote to approve. Again, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, participating in school choice. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have an update from the Six Town Regional Planning Board. In your packet, there is a letter. That. The Six Town Regional Planning Board has sent to the select boards of the six towns and they felt that it would be helpful. If they also sent it to us as well. And it's in your packet, Bill, anything you'd like to tell us about that?
None. No, not really. It, it's just really covering where we're at and pretty much where we hope to go. I think you can draw that from it. Definitely at this time, it is worth saying that definitely at this time, there are. There is active discussion within the Six Town Board as to whether or not. We're ready to recommend or not recommend continuing this process. There are legitimate concerns. Both about wanting to maintain the districts as they are by members of our, our board. There is strong belief that the information that's been provided to us by the consultants is, is accurate. Accurate and should be. And we encourage that some of this stuff gets acted upon one way or another, but. It's still the best. We had a vote at our last meeting about our feelings relative to the educational component. And. The word potential. Was placed in by me, but certainly in recognition that without the word potential. As opposed to saying it would be definite. There's potential educational. Excellence that could be attained by doing this, but we recognize it's only a potential and there are still. A lot of questions particularly around the financial aspects of it. Would it really make a difference financially? As it relates to sustainability and, and maintaining that, that educational component that we envision. Joining these two districts. So that's kind of a. A nondescript way of, of talking about it, but I hope that. That gives you all some information as relates to the, the kind of conversation that we do have. And the conflict that comes out of it.
Thank you. Heather?
Yeah, potential, that is a good point. Um, and this is so late in the process, but I, it just for some reason just struck with me. What sorts of resources have you been looking up or have you been presented with or has the group brought? As far as research on consolidating rural schools and their efficacy, both financially and academically, just out of curiosity and culture wise.
The end, say that again.
I was just wondering what sorts of research the group has.
Oh, what do we, what have we done?
Not what you have done, what what research has been brought to the table for you guys to also study as far as what the actual efficacy is of of consolidation and on the culture and academics and finances?
It's mostly got to do with numbers and the opportunities that that larger scales can provide. And it's not numbers of staff or administration, it's numbers of students themselves.
And so like you've been looking over case studies of other schools and and things like that.
Definitely, you, there's always comparison between like communities and different communities as well. The whole process has to do with what kinds of things can you offer when you have very small numbers and how do you do it? And I think that it sort of goes to when reflecting on it, you you have to think about alternative educational venues, which would be charter schools in particular. And how to charter schools with small populations arrange their curriculum so that they can present the same kind of educational opportunity and advancement that they can then, for example, pass the MCAS test. It's not, I mean, going way back to the models of Hampshire College. Tossing a frisbee has a lot of potential in terms of understanding aerodynamics and many physical aspects of a spin and a flat disc. But there you go. I mean, you have, there's all kinds of stuff that you can look at. And certainly each district is trying to present as they present or don't present to us. The the pluses of of their particular model. Gil Montague is probably more engaged because this whole process started with us. But through our previous superintendent. Whereas it didn't emanate from Pioneer, and so you get a much different attitude brought forward to the committee from from Pioneer than it's come from from Gil Montague.
Yeah, I I was I was involved early on with the committee, but I was just, just lately, I've been kind of looking over the National Rural Education Association and thinking of some of my past experiences. Yeah, and I I just, I, you know, I just I know we have feelings of how things are going to go and what we have now and what we could potentially offer, but it just looking at schools that have done this. It does seem pretty questionable. And but I mean, I'm sure you've looked at both sides, but I suggest more people do, yeah.
The rural educational thing is is interesting because you have a previous superintendent, I believe, from from Greenfield, who is has worked with the town of Warwick to get their plan approved through the department of elementary and secondary education. So, yeah, that, I mean, there there's active thinking going on out there. And people within our community are are active in it and acting as advisors. So I accept that there's all kinds of approaches to education. It's just how are you going to do the macro on and I think that's where I'm at in terms of school committee and and this study board as well. And I'm certainly open to anybody wanting to throw an idea to present. You just have to try to catch me and contact me.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else have anything at the moment?
Christina?
This, um, the purpose of the, yeah, so the purpose of the letter is to solicit input from the town planning boards, is that right? So going to the town boards.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to get the we would hope to get the select boards and then the wish, the dream actually is that through the select boards, you then have a better venue to get the word and thoughts out to the general community. Given that, I'm not sure too many people attend select board meetings. I know they don't in Gil, so that thought process isn't really going to go very far. But nonetheless, it I can't, I can't express what I want to, what I'm thinking. But I give up on that, on that, I give up on myself right now.
Just trying to understand what, this is such a huge topic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
A narrow topic of today's agenda, which is just this letter, right? We're not talking about six town regionalization in general, it's just understanding that the phase of the process that we're in right now is is still soliciting feedback, is that right? Or are we having a broader conversation? Is this a forum for having a broader conversation about this meaty topic?
Yeah, I lost my train of thought and I was talking about select boards. And yes, we're trying to get the select boards to give us encouragement that, yes, they're still they still want to pursue this thing. And some of the responsibility, because all those select boards set up this this board. But since it's been set up, they've really been absent. We don't get funding from any town, it's all through grants. That kind of thing may need to stop. The towns need to get more involved, and if it involves monetarily, then that should come come forward too. But so I think, anyway, in general, the letter is just saying, this is what we want to do, this is, we aspire to getting more communication. And part of that communication has to come from you. So here's our report. And give us some input back, give us some feed. Is that any better than my failure before?
Thanks, Bill. John? You're muted, John.
Bill, do you have any insight as to why Warwick withdrew from Pioneer Valley? Why, why would they do that? It seems they're going to go back and set up a really tiny school that's been there for a long time. But the high school kids are going to be grandfathered at least into Pioneer.
Yes, they they quit the district because the district closed down their elementary school. And their elementary school was actually, as I understand it, was actually doing well, was getting some students choiced in. So they had full classrooms, but financially, the Pioneer District felt that they had to consolidate kids into one less building. And they also, I mean, before that Pioneer shut down Lydon's Elementary School, so those two towns don't have a an elementary school, although Warwick is restarting theirs.
So it seems that identity is a really big piece of the picture as consolidation occurs, is, would that be accurate? That sounds, I don't want to waste time.
Absolutely. And you have it right in Montague with both the Hillside School when that got closed. And then the Montague Center School were great examples of local identity. I would, you know, my word is thought is more along the lines of parochial, but I don't necessarily want to use that in case somebody thinks that's ill of that.
And just for information, going back further, there was a Montague City School when I was a child. That had been one, that was the first one closed of all of them.
That's way down by where Farren is.
It's down in the corner. I think it's Knights of Columbus now, that little brick building by the railroad track.
Yeah, I was saying, it was actually the Freemasons for a minute, but I think they've sold the building at this point, yeah.
Yep, my my parents went there and I went there to school.
And I think it's finally uncondemned, it's finally is not standing very well anymore.
It was interesting because a friend of mine saved the articles from the newspaper when it was closed, people were distressed. They're always distressed when they use, lose a community school, that's, that's very natural. Very natural feeling.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else at this time?
I think, I think it's worth clarifying that it's been shared at previous meetings that this, the plan would not close any schools, that the elementary schools would all be preserved. That the plan would just be to consolidate the middle schools to one campus, the high schools into one campus. And I'm just reiterating things that have already been said, but I also want to add on a concern of mine is that that will be forgotten, that five years down the road, ten years down the road, our elementary schools will be closed if we go down the consolidation path. And so an interest of mine is working in a safety, a safe check to make sure that that cannot happen because to the point of cultural identity as a Gil resident and representative on this committee in Gil, it's essential that our elementary school is not closed and that there's a safeguard to make sure that that doesn't end up happening despite current intentions that does doesn't end up happening down the road.
Right. That's an important point that that has been emphasized right along, and I think you're correct, if people believe that needs to be important, it certainly needs to be written in, even if it's not a consideration now to look forward if there's consolidating because that's a point.
No, tha- thank you for bringing that up because the stage that the this process right now is is one of gathering information, developing data. And then making a recommendation. And once the recommendation is made, then the the board morphs into a different phase, which is actually writing a proposal for a regional, a new regional agreement. And as Jane just said, that's where you would implement that kind of mandate, which is true in the Gil Montague. Gil is guaranteed to have their school by our our agreement. Apparently, that wasn't necessarily, I don't know Pioneer's agreement, but perhaps that wasn't in there.
Thank you. So, and we thank the six town regional planning board for for sending us a copy of the letter that went to the select board so that we stay informed as well. Thank you. The next item is, we have a presentation on addressing issues of equity, so I think probably Jean is joining us. Hi, Jean.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. This should be linked in to the agenda as well. And just move you all. All right, so I have a couple of things to go over and share about issues of equity and a number of initiatives and things that we're working on this year relate specifically to this area. So I wanted to dig a little bit deeper into some of them today. So the first, we've talked a little bit about this, is our culturally responsive practices leadership academy, which Jane is a part of, and we have been working to kind of build background knowledge on race and culture. We had a a great presentation, a great professional learning experience just the other day about the context of the historical context of race and what the team is tasked with. This year is to identify an area to focus on and kind of go through a process that the company we're working with has to evaluate the, it's almost like a needs assessment and to evaluate how we can put in some action and make some steps and some changes across the district. And so we have been focusing and whittled a way down to looking at addressing school culture. And we're kind of in the initial phases of this, so I don't have a ton to share about it right now. But we're really looking to create an action plan and address some ways to improve school culture at all the schools through this process. The ESL department, so the English as a Second Language Department is reviewing curriculum. So over the past few years, teachers have kind of developed curriculum, or some teachers are using a little bit older curriculum. And we're really trying to connect to what's called the WIDA standards, which are, they come out of Wisconsin. And they are really the frameworks that the state has adopted to say, this is the structure we think students should be learning with as their multilingual learners, and they're starting to learn English as a second language. And so those are updated in two thousand twenty, which, as you can imagine, kind of got put on the back burner for a lot of districts. And so it's really coming back to light and trying to get more alignment. And so what we're doing is we've kind of done some brainstorming of, you know, what do we want to see in a curriculum? What are we looking for? We've kind of culled a bunch of different curriculums and we've started to narrow it down into a few that we're going to meet with vendors and learn more about the curriculum. We're really looking K to twelve here for our our teachers. And at the same time, we know that a curricular, a curriculum might not meet the needs of a K student and an eleventh grade student. And so even if we end up looking at multiple curricula at different grade levels, we really want to frame things that they align to the WIDA standard, so there's consistency within the department. And you can see here that the standards are centered on equity and fostering, you know, cultures and identities. And so, you know, the big ideas of WIDA standards is, and ELD is English Language Development, is equity and opportunity, access, integration of content and language. So you know, the standards really emphasize the four core content areas as well as learning social language. And so it really is about ensuring that students who are learning English also have the tools and skills necessary to be successful in their content classrooms. Collaboration and, you know, looking at developing language in a way that it's useful, functional in their in their world. So we're in the middle of this process. We actually tomorrow during the ASL department meeting, they're going to get a preview from one one company, and then we're looking to look at a few more. And so I'll continue to update, but this is definitely an area where we're growing and building and strengthening our equity access for students. The next is the similar curriculum review process, and this is for elementary for social emotional learning. So the grant that Diane Ellis had gotten us last year and it continues into this year is a social emotional learning and mental health grant. Our consultant identified one area at the elementary level that really needed some refinement, and that is that we've had some starts and stops for SEL curriculum and at the three different elementary schools, and not everyone is using the same thing. And so this committee has really been working hard over the past two months to look at curriculum, but we actually only started looking at curriculum just a couple of meetings ago because we really started with some visioning and framing, you know, what is SEL, what is social emotional learning, what are the needs of our students in particular to Gil Montague? And, you know, what's our vision and goal, goals that we want to get out of this? And so Castle, which is a group collaborative for academic, social, emotional learning, they're kind of like the gurus when it comes to this, and they have a number of different resources on their site, and one of them is really attune, attuning your SEL curriculum to equity. And so you can see these are just some of the things that they talk about, you know, it's a powerful lever for creating caring, inclusive classrooms. It really fosters and depends on and creates an equitable learning environment, looks at individual interests and values. It's relevant for students and it confirms cultures and identities. There's a number of, you know, different SEL themes or, you know, focus areas that really align with, you know, understanding who you are and where you came from and how you contribute to a positive school and classroom culture. It's really, it's like a tier one program, social emotional learning. It's not just for students who are at risk, it's really across the board, a systemic improvement for culture and climate, which connects very closely to the cultural responsive practices work that we're doing. You uplift students' voice, promotes agency and civic engagement. It also strengthens adults' practice to ensure equity. And one huge piece that we're looking at, and one of the things we want to ensure when we get a curriculum is that there's social emotional connections with home. is that there's social emotional connections with home and the community. And so that what we do in school can extend to families at home, building in tools, resources in order to support, you know, the needs for students to be able to, you know, engage with peers, engage with adults, and really build the skills in this area. And then the last piece, which I'm not quite sure, I don't think I've talked about it too much, but this is another grant program we're doing this year. So MYCAP, it's called My Career and Academic Plan, is a program, it's not really a program. It's a curriculum slash philosophy that's come out of the Department of Education where it's building in career, college and civic readiness. We currently have this program embedded in our advisory, advisory curriculum at the high school. We ended up going with this process and it's a free curriculum with our Innovation Pathways Program. A couple of years ago, when we first started that. And so what we're looking to do is we're looking to extend this into the middle school. So there's a cohort of us. We actually had a meeting today in Marlboro where we had a planning session where we're looking at building this into the middle school curriculum. And we're still trying to decide what that looks like. But the goal and the reason I put this here, because I believe it connects truly to equity, is because it, it really engages students in thinking about their skills, their talents, their interests, things they might not even realize are careers that they could possibly be part of in thinking about, you know, beyond high school. So college, whether they're going to go to college or they're going to a two-year or four-year, whether they're going to take a gap year, whether they're going to go straight into the workforce. What this program does is it builds in curricular pieces that allow students to explore, to see folks in the field that really, you know, represent them so that we have more engagement in post-secondary experiences. And so MYCAP is actually used nationwide across, across the country. And there's a lot of data that shows that with students, especially starting in the middle school with this program, you know, similar to an advisory program at the high school, students are more likely to, you know, graduate within four years, more likely to have more engagement at the high school level and increase, you know, their, their graduation requirements. You know, some, you know, even they've seen increase in taking of AP courses and college level courses because students start to develop over time, you know, a really, a real interest in what they're, what they're looking for. So we're really excited to bring this to Great Falls Middle School. We're going to pilot with our eighth grade teaching team this spring and then build it into the curriculum for six, seven and eight, starting next year. So all of these really focus in on, you know, making sure that we are being equitable for our students and engaging our students and giving everyone the biggest opportunity we can within our curricular pieces and across, across the different grade levels. So that's just one, some of the things I wanted to highlight related to equity, things that we're really digging in and working on this year. So, any questions?
Thanks. John, I think I see your hand.
I, I missed the, the acronym WIDA. What, what does that stand for, please? The WIDA standards? What, what is that?
Yeah, so WIDA, I believe it. Because it's really world-class instructional design and assessment. So it's a consortium out of Wisconsin. I forget which college or university in Wisconsin. But they have been kind of the renowned area of ESL instruction. And so many states, instead of drafting their own frameworks or standards for ESL instruction, have built or connected and adopted the WIDA standards as the, as their kind of foundational standards. And so that's what Massachusetts has done.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Jean? Bill?
Yeah, I think it's, it's interesting the current discussion around the percentage of students not wanting to, not necessarily choosing to go to, to college after high school. And the argument developing about how our schools are not providing enough technical training to, to students to make them able to step out of the, out of high school and into a job. So I think some of our programs certainly have started to address that within the last few years. And so that's encouraging. It's also interesting to note that many educational systems are looking at decreasing populations as well. And there was discussion recently about our, our local community colleges and how they're, they've been impacted by student decline, enrollment decline, as well as financial decline and what they're doing to, to try to counteract that. And I think this, what Jean, you just described is, must be more than just high school at this point. It's really taking a much broader spectrum of our educational systems and making them have to adjust to a, a changing demographic.
I definitely would, I do, and I agree. And I, and actually conversations with the guidance counselor at the high school level of a number of students who are going, going the community college route for the associates and then transferring into a four-year college. And a lot of that has to do with finances. But I do know, you know, Greenfield Community College in particular has, they're doing a pilot right this year to connect all the Franklin County schools in looking at the possibility of what could an early college regional program look like to get students more engaged in community college at a, at a high school level, which we do a dual enrollment program, but they're looking at piloting something that would address the entire Franklin County. And so we had a meeting of all the Franklin County schools back in, I think it was November, where we started to talk about, you know, what are the possibilities? What could it look like for individual districts versus the county as a whole? GCC has also looked to make a number of different onsite activities to try to get more students engaged with them, you know, post, post-high school. And I, and I agree, our, our work over the past few years with Innovation Pathways provides students with that opportunity to, to leave high school with a number of skills, experience with internships. So if they, they want to go straight into a job, they have a little bit more experience at, at our high school.
One aspect of that collaboration between the, the community college and the high school kids and, and the college level classes that they get gives them some credits. So then the argument is that it will save them money going to court because high school is the last for free education you get. Anyway, so you would have to only go to school three years instead of four because you already had the credits. Anyway, thanks for your help.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much, Jean.
Yes, thank you. It's always helpful. Thanks a lot. Okay, the next item is a discussion about the open Montague School Committee seat. We still have an opening available and we have published ads in both of the papers. And we are accepting, if anyone has a letter of interest, if they're interested in the Montague seat, they just need to send it to the superintendent's office and, or email it there. If anyone knows of anyone who might be interested, that would be helpful. We'll accept letters until the 27th, which is the day before our next meeting. And we hope to have someone by then.
Jane, can we, can we also add that this seat would only be held until the, the next election? And, and at the very least, we encourage people to, if they don't want to sign up for a lame duck term, so to speak, please encourage them to run for office and take out some election papers.
Right. Thank you for making that point, Bill. I appreciate it. Yes. And anyone appointed now would really only be appointed until the election in May, at which case they certainly could take out papers and run for a full three-year term or decide if they didn't want to, that was fine too. So that is an option. Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, the last item on the business portion is in-person school committee meetings. During COVID, the governor and legislature passed a law and then an extension of the law allowing any types of town committees or school committees to meet totally virtually if they so chose. And we have been able to still continue to get the work done by doing that. The current extension is expiring in March and I attended a state leadership school committee workshop this past weekend in Marlboro. And our legislative liaisons, we have some that work at the state level and some that work at the federal level. There is a bill that has been submitted at the state level, but unfortunately, as we've learned with a new governor taking over in the State House, the legislature is not really in a position where it looks like they will be dealing with this bill that's been submitted in time before the current extension expires. The legislature is apparently still firming up their committees. So if indeed it does not get extended, then previous to COVID, all school committees had to meet in person with the exception of if the committee took a vote to allow it or any other select boards, any others. I know select boards have done it previously. The committee involved could vote to allow a hybrid form, but the only hybrid form that has been allowed previously is in order to have a hybrid meeting, there, you would have to have a quorum in person and that quorum would have to include the chair. Once you have that, if some members want to remote in, that would be allowed if your, if your committee has taken that vote. So that's just something for people to be aware of because it looks like we might be surprised and they might extend it, but it doesn't look right now as if that's very likely. So we're, that was the specific question that I wanted to ask at that meeting and they had already realized people would need to know that. So we'll have to get back to that again, but if something doesn't change, then we'll have to change the way we meet. John?
Would that, would that vote then have to be taken before at the February 28th meeting then to meet in, to allow us to meet in the hybrid form with that?
The law goes, we're able to meet remotely until March 31st, so.
Till the end of March.
Yeah.
Right. We do have a little, a little bit of time. I'd like to think they might be able to deal with the bill, but I don't think that's the way it looks. And you have, one have anything about that? I don't have any answers necessarily, but. Okay, but we will continue to look at that as we continue to meet. We don't have any minutes to approve at this point. I expect we will have some soon. Any agenda requests, please? We generally meet by the Tuesday ahead of the next scheduled meeting. Please get any ideas to Bill, Brian or myself. Right now, we've scheduled the next two meetings for February 28th and March 14th. March 14th, as we've talked about earlier, we need to vote the budget as opposed to the tentative budget. And the suggestion that came up earlier when we were looking at budget information, we could possibly schedule a March 7th meeting if the committee felt that would be helpful. By then, we should at least have a little more information about the budget. We're just not sure how much. Brooke?
Um, yeah, I'm wondering if it makes, not really more sense, but just another possibility would be to put it as an agenda item, just to talk further about the budget and any changes they might like to make or even have an opportunity for public participation again. I think we could possibly include that in the next meeting on the 28th instead of creating a whole other meeting for that.
Um, we certainly can. We certainly can take a discussion about it, but I believe from what Joanne said, we don't expect to have any more specific information until March. But that's certainly, you know, we can keep this on the agenda. There's no problem there. I appreciate that suggestion. Anyone have a theory about whether, Christina?
Yeah, I, I understand Joanne couldn't have, have anything by the 28th, but I wonder if from the principal's side, them, working with the teachers, if by the 28th, we could have a sense of what they're thinking in terms of the list of potential items on the cut list versus the add list. I think that's my biggest concern in seeing is being put on the spot on the 14th and not having a chance to think through what those decisions might be and even getting a chance to think about what they're think, uh, see what they're thinking about on the 28th would be helpful.
I think it will be a challenge to do that, given the, the number of days left before the break. And then just the Monday and Tuesday, really, if we were to give, get that information. And I, I believe they have staff meetings later that first week. So depending on how much consulting they're able to do, it would really be relatively minimal. And we want to make sure that they take the opportunity to check in. There is some stuff that they've begun to populate the list, but it's really, it's not totally complete. That's the only concern that I have is that they might not have enough time themselves to gather that information.
Does it make sense, is there another option to reschedule the February 28th meeting to March 7th?
It's possible if we decide we want to. I mean, we generally have two set ones a year, but I don't believe there's any particular issue that is time sensitive in terms of that date at this point. Know of anything, Brian?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I mean, the, no, not, not that I can think of.
I do have an ongoing list. Give me a moment and I will get that.
Yeah, if we're able, I agree, Christine. I think that's a good idea is having a larger meeting on the 7th as opposed to two separate meetings.
Oh, the only thing that actually is time sensitive is we had posted the open seat letters of interest by the 27th to be appointed on the 28th. We certainly could just shift that, I believe. Brian, that would make sense, I think.
Yeah, I could, I could get a different communication to the newspapers. And Julian could add to Montague notes this week and Mike publishes this Thursday. So I can change that.
Yeah, I would have to get to him immediately, I think, to be able to get it. Anyone else?
I got it.
Thanks, Mike. Now we can count on you.
It doesn't come more immediate than being at the meeting, but if, language would be to just change to be voted at the March 7th meeting.
Roger.
Okay.
Right. So letters of interest should come in by the 6th, so we'd have them the day before to get out to the committee. Thank you.
Got it.
Um, are people thinking generally that they would be able to make a meeting on the 7th? Is there anyone that thinks there would have a conflict so that we're not running up against that? Unless people want to have two meetings, which is certainly possible, but not necessary. John?
So we would then have three meetings for March total. Is that correct? Would we just?
Yes, yes, we would. It would be the 7th because we do have to vote the budget on the 14th of March. That is a timeline that can't be changed for sure. So by a show of hands, people who are thinking that switching the 28th to the 7th would work for them. Okay, it looks like we have, okay, consensus. In that case, forget that I mentioned the 28th and put it on your calendar as March 7th. And now, given how things have developed this year with the budget, that certainly makes sense. I appreciate you all being flexible. now, given how things have developed this year with the budget, that certainly makes sense. I appreciate you all being flexible. Okay, anything else? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm with it.
Bill, thank you.
I'll second.
And Brooke, was that Brooke?
Yep.
Right, thank you. I try to mention the names because um usually you're very clear, but I know we have someone uh taking notes and it makes it easier for them if if we identify the people moving and seconding. So um then we'll do our roll call to adjourn. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer? Think we might have lost Jennifer. Uh, Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all. I appreciate all the work we accomplished. Thanks.